Good evening, this is the July eighteenth meeting of the Belgrade Planning Board. Sarah Linggett cannot be here today, so I, George Seal, will be chairing the meeting as vice chair. We'll start off with roll call and introductions. Starting on my left, we have Nick Sicaro of the Planning Board, Pete Sargent, Penny Morrell. To my right, Craig Alexander, myself, George Seal, and also from the town is the CO enforcement officer, Hans Rasmussen. I'd ask everybody in the audience to introduce themselves for the minutes, I appreciate it, starting with you, man.
Sandra L. Stevens.
Will Mitchell.
Paul Davis.
Very good. The first matter of business is Mr. Mitchell's shoreline zoning application. This is for three one-one-six Timber Point Road map. Eight A, same map that I'm on. What, eight? This is a shoreline zoning application to the place of the bay on an existing one and a half car garage and put a guest suite on the second floor of twelve by twenty-four feet dimensions. Mr. Mitchell, is there the second time we've actually looked at this application because we were unable to attend the meeting? The, is there anything you would like to make sure we understand about it? It's pretty straightforward, but.
Yeah, I think it's relatively straightforward, the existing building is currently being used for a workshop, but I build furniture and just for my own enjoyment and charities, and so we're gonna add a bay, so, you know, we'll get some extra storage and then with four brain kids and four kids, it gets kind of crowded in the summertime, so we'd like to put a suite up there that basically could stay in when they go on vacation.
Okay, and did I understand your site drawing is a hundred thirty-eight feet from the lake, right? Beyond the hundred foot setback. So it'll be a conforming structure or addition to the conforming structures. Any questions or comments from board members?
I wasn't here, so you guys discussed it?
Uh, we did, we did not, no, because Mr. Mitchell at the last meeting was unable to attend, so we tabled it until today.
Oh, okay.
So, go for it.
It's doing on the garage, you know, first question, is there gonna be any, any he eating and type of?
I'm sorry, any heating?
Heating, I'm sorry.
Heating?
Yeah.
No, not in maybe popcorn or something, but there's no kitchen in it, no?
Yeah.
Yeah, has anyone talked, you know, is that real or not, or something? Has anyone ever explained to you why there's no eating? But why are asking that question?
Um, I believe you're not supposed to have two kitchens on a lot, but I don't know whether or not that would be issues.
Right, yeah, no, it is still an issue because it's in the shoreline zone. And so, like, he doesn't have enough lot area in the shoreline zone to have two residential dwellings. There'd be a second residential dwelling and a cooking facilities and the the board plan, pretty clear that there shows that there will be no kitchen facilities.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up, actually.
It's always an issue.
There isn't a bath.
Does have a bath, but that's fine, just can't have all three.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? All the times on bulk houses and proposals of this sort, we listen to a condition indicating that facilities are allowed, but I'm not so sure that's needed since the this is a much clearer floor plan than we often times have, but clearly don't indicates that we're not approving any cooking facilities. But I'll be sure that it is, it feels differently.
This campus thirty feet from the lake.
Yeah. Actually, I'm not sure. It, it, the proposal is just for
Yeah, right, but because that's it would sit to no rate.
That is, but it doesn't really come into play with, with his name proposed. Yeah, true.
Oh, it is across the road?
Yeah, it's way up beyond. It's for four bedroom. How many bedrooms in the camp?
There are three. Not in shoreline zone, but this field is outside shoreline zone. So it's, that's the business end of the set. And just, I think it's good practice that the no kitchen be a condition for future reference. If property gets transferred, somebody buys it and they check the permits and it does not say no kitchen. They might just assume they can put a kitchen. So I think as a condition of approval, it's just good practice for a future housekeeping.
Okay.
I'd be happy to have that as part of it. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. I think we will, we're ready to go to the finance effect and law. And you'll have to bear with us as you'll need to re-plant it, we have to go through what we can agree with. April. What's that? Uh, those are done by the soil site evaluator. Oh, you couldn't read the signature?
I approved it.
Yeah.
Eddie Marvel designed it.
Yeah.
Inter marble.
Inter marbles.
Vitality corner.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so this is Belgrade Planning Board findings of fact and conclusions of the law for shoreline zoning application. Again, all the particulars, your name, address, lot, map, map and lot number. Shoreline zoning permit for adding a bay to existing one and a half car garage and put a guest suite on second floor. The application was presented to the planning board on seven eighteen twenty-four, thank you for changing that. Conclusions of law, Belgrade Planning Board finds that the project is or is not a permitted structure accessory to allow use on a not conforming lot. I would suggest it is a is not, it is a is a permitted use, it's hard to double negatives. Then why don't we vote on that? So is or is not a permitted use?
Is.
Is.
Yes. Yeah, yes.
Okay, so Nick, Pete, Penny, Greg, is permitted use, I vote likewise. So that's five zero. We'll maintain a safe and helpful conditions by a vote of board found the standard was met or was not met.
Was.
Was.
Was. Was.
Okay, so all of the board members, including myself, voted was met. Over five zero. And in terms of the basis for that, it will be using our standard language of based on the application and public record. Second finding of law, the application will not result ward pollution, erosion or sedimentation to surface waters by a vote of the board found the standard was, was not met.
Was. Was. Was.
I likewise vote was five zero was met. Again, same basis based on the application public record. The application will adequately provide the disposal of all waste water by a vote of the board, the board found the standard was, was not met.
Was. Was. Was.
Was.
Five zero was, I also vote was. The application will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird or other wildlife habitat. By a vote of the board, board found the standard was or was not met.
Was. Was. Was.
Five zero was, I also feel was. The application will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters by vote of the board, the board found the standard was or was not met.
Was. Was. Was.
Again, five zero was met, I vote was as well. Believe this is going to be not applicable. The application will protect archaeological and historical resources as designated in the comprehensive plan. I'll agree, it's not applicable. So see how many before. The application will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use by a vote of the board, the board found the standard was or was not met.
Was. Was. Was.
Five to zero, myself included was met. Number eight, the application is in accordance with the provisions of section fifteen land use standards. By a vote of board, board found the standard was met based on the evidence in the record and further as follows, and this is the long list, and I'll just go through them as we normally do. And we'll decide which ones are not applicable and which ones apply, and then we'll go back and vote in mass for all those that are applicable. Minimum lot standards, I believe that's applicable since we're talking about accessory structure. Principal and accessory structures. Believe that's applicable, campgrounds, NA. Individual private camp sites in a commercial and industrial uses, NA. Parking areas that are proposed, so that's NA. Roads and driveways. That's, I believe, NA, none are proposed. Signs, NA. Stormwater runoff, that's applicable. Septic waste disposal systems, that's applicable. Essential services, that's NA, I believe, we agree with them. Mineral exploration and extraction. NA. Agriculture, NA. Timber harvesting, land management roads, NA. Clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting. Didn't think to ask about that, is there much clearly needed for the addition of trees?
We cut one tree, that's, that's it, so I don't expect any others now.
Plus, it's a hundred forty feet back, so. We'll leave that, it's applicable, but added trees, storm damaged trees, dead tree removal, that's NA, that was quite for extensions to clearly vegetation removal standards. That's NA, that was not applied for. Revegetation requirements. That's NA. Erosion, sedimentation control that applies. Shoreline stabilization, NA. Stop me if anybody disagrees. Soils. No new septic system is being proposed, the current one's adequate, right? That's the point, so there's no soils work that was necessary, so I would say that's NA. Everybody.
Is he gonna have to tie into it, he's gonna be tying into it?
Yeah, they're tying it, so existing system, which is apparently adequate.
Right.
Which is on the shoreline zone.
Yeah, and one of the aspects of the soils requirement is, is the soils, if you're doing a new system, the soil test evaluation did a pass, and there was none for this particular system, so. If you water quality that applies. Historical and archaeological sites, that's NA. And it's not resource protection, so that's NA. So, the standards from section fifteen, the overall land use standards that are, we will vote on are the minimum lot standards. Principal and accessories, structure standards. The stormwater runoff standard. Septic waste disposal system standard. The clearing or removal of vegetation standard, other than for activities in timber harvesting. The water quality standards and the erosion and sedimentation control standard. So, by a vote of board, board found this standard was met, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
I also vote yes, so five to zero. Yes, and for all of these, it will be based on the application in public record. So this brings us to making a decision with regard to Hans recommended that we approve this with a project specific condition of approval.
No kitchen.
Yeah, and the wording that something along these lines is what we've used in the past. The project may not include cooking facilities, cooking is the exact word used in the definition of residential dwelling. So I would suggest we suggest use something similar if everybody wants to go in that direction.
That's fine, and I had one more question. Certified contractor number, do you need that beyond the hundred feet or is it shoreline completely?
It's in shoreline.
So there's no certified contract number?
Good catch. So, typically how we handle that, let me explain that requirement a little bit, there's a requirement in the shoreline zone that when you're moving more than a cubic yard of soil, that you need to use a Department of Environmental Protection certified contractor either to do the work or at least to oversee the work to ensure proper soil erosion control measures are taken. You don't, you haven't provided that. The condition we typically use for that contingency is to require that you provide that to Hans prior to the start of construction. There, there are numerous ones in Belgrade as well as this area.
Most of the contractors.
Do you already have a contract? We will not be excavating any soil, in fact, we need to bring in a little bit of fill to level the
Yeah, no, fill, fill is a part of it, yeah, yeah, it's, it's whether you're disturbing the landscape and, and whether it's more than a cubic yard, fill excavation.
Sure, that's fine, look with Hans to figure out how and
Yeah, there's a, he can help you even find the list. So, online.
Yep.
The D P website. So, so that would be the second condition, which would probably be something like provide name and certification number of EP supply contractors to Belgrade CO enforcement officer. Or to start with construction. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes, good morning.
There is also a standard condition of approval that applied to your project. I don't know if Hans has mentioned this to you, but I'll read it just so that you're aware of it. And that has to do with stormwater runoff. Managed stormwater runoff from new or expanded structures in accordance with section fifteen. I don't know if that's an L or an I of Belgrade shoreline zoning ordinance and the main Department of Environmental Protection's best management practices as outlined in the publication Conservation Practices for Homeowners. Such measures are to be put in place prior to building and use. Like I said, this is a standing condition that we apply on anything that's got additional impervious surfaces, rooftops, whatever, you see?
And basically, what the easiest, most overwhelming one is just crush tone on the grid line of the road. Yeah, so, estimated for before it's transfilled with press.
If you want to see that publication, you can go to the town website under Planning Board and, and exist in there. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, approve the application with the two conditions that were just mentioned.
Second.
Second.
So, motion made by Nick, seconded by Craig. All in favor? Nick?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Greg, yes, and I, George, also vote yes, so five to zero, yes. Do you need me to write, write those two conditions out on here?
Is there some?
Yeah.
Yes, I always say reverse binding back.
Okay.
Facilities?
Give me a moment. You have to down the date four times. Just sign the paperwork.
All right, I appreciate the role you all play in making sure building projects are done properly in the town, and thank you.
Your forecourt. You get to keep the pen, Nick, and
give him the paper.
I saw Sarah's email, let you all get to see that.
Yeah. Yeah. So the next item is all you folks in the back there with your arms crossed. You might as well come on. So that's the agenda item is the new fire station, a question and answer and discussion. So that's the agenda item is the uh, new fire station, uh, question and answer and discussion.
Yeah, we just wanted to, you know, approach the, the board and stuff. We signed up and shared it. Sightlines they hired, believe sightline did, the company survey and stuff like that. Coming up and just the beginning process and. They have a preliminary floor plan that he's got right there. Um, and the lot is self a hand lumber. We have that. So the hammer lumber will be the Martin property. So we just wanted to give you guys, you know, questions for us. Um, just watching. Anything about the land, I mean, like I said, further the application will be coming from them and all that, that's what we might have to do, so.
Right.
We just wanted to give you guys a heads up to see if you see anything that might. Be a red flag or. Yeah, something like that, so are everybody familiar with the property or?
Uh, I'm not. Uh, I, I don't even, I'm not entirely sure where.
Yeah, across from the information booth.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Just south of the information booth, but on the opposite side of the road built. Bob Martin's old property, the red house for the detached garage.
Okay.
How'd you get that?
Bill, yeah, he, he lives next door, that doesn't show it on that, but he lives to the right of. So Bill, the son. Yeah, so his son lives up here, the one with the windmill.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a little red house, there's an existing house and garage right here. And there's a road that goes to one property out back, plus the lock that was all the way. For the streams.
Yeah.
That'll be torn down, Bob Martin's house.
Yeah, the proposed. Yeah, they, they've done a preliminary thing, sightlines, this we just got it this week. But that was what they preliminary had drawn in, uh, there's a little bit of a question about the right of way. Reservoir pool. Right here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and this section right here. Um, so that's being worked on to um, with D E P. Trying to get, I don't know, they, they think they've been out there, they not, not yet, so they're trying to get D E P out there to. Do their thing, but they've already, they've come out and did the wetland. Reliation already this spring.
Okay. Stepping back, this is what, five years?
Yeah, we've been looking for a piece of property.
Several lots have fallen through for different reasons and and this is the lot that we've been getting other person sailing agreement that closing set for the end of the year. Contingent upon some of these items that we have to figure out. Um, the law was surveyed, so it's about a four and a half acre lot, Mr. Martin's retaining fifty feet. Along, so we've had a boundary line agreement done and that's kind of factored into it. Um, Waterset Resources consultants, the town hired them to go out and do a well and dilution, burnout pool survey. They did that spring of this year during the, the breeding season and.
And we did that first because we didn't have Sheridan and sightline on, so we wanted. He's a, he knows all that kind of stuff, so he said we'd like to hire that, get it done in the spring.
But you wanted to be this side of the railroad tracks?
I, we just had five years looking for a piece of property and.
That's fine.
We've had property here.
Yeah.
That corner over there, all got then, and then another one that was too much of a weapons.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, shoreline zoning that was just.
Also, explain to them, Dan, why we're trying to stay right in this central.
Yeah, it all deals with the five mile radius from insurance companies for your insurance costs, so um, this. In that area, it a matter of fact makes it a little bit better towards the Bartlett Road is the end of one thirty-five. Um, Dunn Road is always still a question that. Far end of Dunn Road, we can't get in that five mile radius, but.
Right.
We're still going to keep the other two stations, but that's why we're trying to stay in this area right here um. And find a lot bigger, so, and we're looking for the future because volunteerism is going down and. You're going to have full time people, we already have two now, work during the day, you know, so um.
How many things?
They were examination.
How many bays?
Oh, how many bays? Uh, yeah, you, I think you've got the picture, it's four bays. We're thinking of the future, we never know if you're going to have to transport ambulance service. We're not going to move every truck down here, but the other stations will remain with at least one truck just for that insurance purpose. Um, so there will be trucks on this side of the track, so we do get asked that question, but it's like we're running out of property. So we either get, yeah.
Four with two D two, so.
Yeah, so there'll be some bunk. For full time people, um, the kitchen, training room. Officers uh, room, then like somebody wanted to come in and be checked blood pressure, little. Um, sick area. Um, we also got a decon for washing our gear and all that, filling bottles. Uh, this whole floor plan might change internally a little bit, but this was something we did, you know, they came up with the effort, so. Uh, but we still got D O T driveway entrance, because we want to try to have.
What's, what's our square footage again, fourteen?
Fourteen and a half.
Yeah, five hundred above right now, and we're working on a grant, right, I know everybody's seen it through um. Susan Collins office and it's gone to uh.
Right.
The next step, so I think we're on the second or third. Looking good, so.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, so the funding is going, I know, back to you guys.
Well, we just voted on that, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, we voted to approve for the other quarter of it.
Right, the one million. Yeah.
Balance.
Yeah.
The balance, right.
So if we don't get the grant, then we have to go back to the town.
If we don't get the grant, then we're back to square one.
Yeah, right. Understood. No, we're just really, we're early in the process still, um. We took this far enough with Sheridan to see how much space we need to fit what we think that the park needs as far as the building square footage. Now is where, you know, we're kind of putting this on pause, this is getting us close enough for now, and we're trying to. Get to the next steps with both D E P, Army Corps, and then D O T um. So, one of the first things that we identified is that, as you all know, the twenty-seventh mobility arterial. Uh, that comes with certain driveway standards and and one of them that's kind of being watched is. Um, over forty-five miles an hour speed limit, you know, the municipal, municipal owned building. Can't be on, can't have a direct access, that's forbidden in the rules without certain requirements. Right, so I think the idea there is they don't want a town office that has the public coming in and out in an area where it's going to be high speed.
Oh, direct access, yes, yeah, okay.
That's why I like this was off, they had to make this a road.
Yeah, it's only forty, forty years too, um, so that was. And I, I don't know, we identified early on, we reached out to Main Duty David Allen, um, and another gentleman there, they reviewed it and basically said. We're willing to work with you, they haven't given us a driveway permit yet, but they said, you know, if you can meet these certain standards, we'd consider waiving that requirement and granting you an access, so. We have some input there, we provided that to sightlines. The next. For the standard that's sort of a counterpart to that in our ordinance, we rely on the D O T permit.
Yeah, okay.
Because we're really not in a position.
It would be kind of a unique situation, because you have a road there plus.
Mayflower.
Yeah, Mayflower and then um, where the trucks are coming in, they'd be separate.
We, we also, the ordinance also has some site distance requirements that are based on speed limit, but again, uh. We tend to defer to D O T on that unless there's some, you know, on one of the more minor town roads, uh, where they. Could care less.
Right. Yeah, they were pretty adamant about this, so they're, they're going to be looking at, and it was about how many vehi- how many vehicles in another day is what.
Are, are there any special requirements for a facility of this nature versus, you know, uh. Um, a storefront or something like that? No storefront. Allowed by rights, so you would, even though you have more traffic, it's, it's really just tied to that municipality owned. Oh, it is. It's on the way, it's weird, right, so. And there's some flexibility in the, in the language, and that's what D O T's looked at, is to basically say, you know, they don't think, you know, an uns or a middlely staffed. Non-public building really is the intent of what they were trying to. Outlaw with writing that standard, so that's why they feel like they can work with us, you know, if the town had like. You know, a town pump station or something like that, I mean, a facility, those are allowed, so they feel like we're in that realm. Um, in general, we meet the basic safety standards for site distance uh. And all that, so we, we like our chances, but that's one of the items we have to work out, and now we're to the point where we can initiate that process with them. They said outright, emergency vehicles only from this access in front of the bays. And that they'll want to see clear separation, you know, for personal vehicles.
Right.
Employees.
Yeah, and that would still be the road, the second one. There's one lot back there. Right now, so that's another, we're going to see if we can move that a little bit and they, and they agree to it, but the, the. Road is on that piece of property, so the right of way goes to them, so.
So I kind of question, uh, are the people down there in the stream? We have to notify them what's going on, you know, coming.
Once you apply, they're actually the ten, well. But our end of the town, not your end of the town, needs to notify them and and. Yeah, I mean, it, it's, and maybe this is a good segue, um. And, and once you finish up beating, then I'll, I'll talk a little bit about it.
Uh, I want to bring that up, but also, what, how's it going to affect the, the other fire? How the, you know, in, in the town, you say you're gonna. You're gonna eliminate any?
Just uh, wanted to, well, we might even keep it as storage, technically we don't own it. That one's on the neighbor's property, we have a lease with that, same in North Belgrade, the lake station's the only one we own.
So what's the story of North Belgrade? What's the story with that?
We're going to keep it, and we have a lease, but we technically don't own the land.
Is that right?
Yeah, we're going to keep a truck over there for the five mile radius for insurance.
Okay.
And you have volunteers that are still.
I'm not sure, who's the lease with?
Little lumber company. I don't know who bought it.
May Wood treaters?
Yeah, is that what it is, yeah.
On McKenna Falls.
Yeah, it's like a hundred year lease, same with the depot.
Oh.
Technically, when it's done being a fire station, it's supposed to go back to the neighbor, whether you let us continue to use it. Or storage or something like that. We might, but.
Okay.
The only station we really own land and everything is the lakes.
Alright, so you.
And that's staying too.
Okay, so you're getting, getting a second home. Location.
What's that?
Ending, ending up with your second home location.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so does we don't all of this, yeah. And I think eventually, I mean, I don't know my time coming, but North Belgrade would be one that. When they built that road up, they really messed up the fire station, that's why they dropped, so. Potentially could be for a one, two bay somewhere there, just to, to move it somewhere close by.
Yeah.
It's a tough, it's a tough station to get in and out, question when they. Slide in.
But one of the big advantages too, and what we're trying to address is. We don't have facilities that meet the needs of a growing department and how things are changing, so Dan can speak this better than I, but, you know, we're, we have less volunteers now. Less people to do this, we're hiring more per diem people in addition to full time. They say overnight, right now, we have a per diem sleeping on a bed that's in the corner of our kitchen in the land station. So, we're not really.
And more calls.
Where, where's the uh, the current septic system?
Uh, it's right here down at the corner.
Uh, is it, is it going to mean you're going to retain that, that area?
I don't think so, I didn't run it up with a new one, yeah.
So where is Mayflower entered?
Right here.
So. How uh, is the building rates up against Mayflower Road?
We're going to have the whole, I think, twenty-five foot setback from the.
Yeah.
From Mayflower Road, and so that's what also the surveyors are looking at is. What we have for rights with that right of way, the, the language in the deed is a little big, it just, it says that the landowner has to provide. Access to that lot. That we're hoping, I think, um.
But the Verna pool might have something to do with it.
I don't see the Verna pool on this map.
It's right here. Yeah, they're, they're typically not mapped in advance, I mean.
Oh.
Or a lot of times they're not. Um. If you look at our shoreline.
If you go right up to Bates, go up Mayflower, and then you see the property pit corner there, take a hard left, and it's right in that corner.
That dark wooded.
Yeah, and that wooded area, right, yeah, down a little bit, right in the corner almost, yeah, right in that area, so that's what he's showing. Right there, because there's that corner. And that's where the Verna pool is.
So that's one of our biggest permitting challenges right now, where we have the most uncertainty, we, I mean, we've reached out to D E P, I think, three times now, it's been. Four or five weeks with no response, so we're hoping sightlines has a better. Better luck than us, but, you know, this was. You know, surveyed and designated as significant, with that comes a two hundred and fifty foot critical threshold uh. Area.
Natural resource protected.
Right, so a good chunk of our, our station is, you know, in the existing lawn area, but that also is overlapped by that two hundred and fifty foot C P H, so. There are permitting mechanisms to allow us to do this, but that's a discretionary permit, we're hoping to get some feedback from D E P to understand. How they're going to look at that. The uh, getting back to the Vernal Pool, and we have a standard in the finding that we have to make about, you know, protection of natural resources and. And that kind of thing, and typically, if one, we rely on two. Requirements in the ordinance, um, one has to do with. Um, you know, as part of your application, you'll be providing maps from uh, Inlet Fish and Wildlife, uh, beginning with Habitat. It's an online mapping series, it has different, you know, deer yards and all kinds of other stuff, but um, but it like in the instance that. I think in the instance of something like this, uh, with a Vernal Pool, the second part is where that will be captured, where uh. Uh, the ordinance asks you to have your application uh, um, reviewed uh, for comment. By the uh, Natural Areas Program in the Department of Conservation. And they're the ones that are likely going to pick up on, on uh, its existence, um. I think, um, the um. We don't have any specific standards to Vernal Pools per se, uh, in terms of setbacks like the state does. So probably we'll be relying on whatever D E P is, is my guess, uh, will prior to the line, you know. So that'll be, because that, that's an obviously limiting factor of this law. Um, and uh, so I just wanted to point that out that. Unless, unless the Natural Areas Program, who normally works with, with D E P, I mean, D E P probably is going to go to the Natural. Program with this same kind of a question. So, just so you know. Yeah, we think, at this point, we don't know if we need a full tier nerve permit, or if we'll meet the standards for permit by rule. Yeah, but you said that's been verified as a Vernal Pool? Yeah. It has, okay. I mean, we didn't submit the, we didn't submit the sheets to I N W yet to get put in public record, we can withhold that um, until later. Yeah. It's spots element or blue spots. I had what I thought was a Vernal Pool on my property and it, it turned out not to be a Vernal Pool.
Yeah, this got tested this spring, so they found significant.
What, wetlands, filling in wetlands, why wouldn't that?
Um, well, the way our ordinance is crafted, it, it focuses on only wetlands that are mapped by the, in the National Wetland Inventory. Which uh, US Fish and Wildlife maintains, and some of this small just doesn't show up on their radar. But if they're not proposing to fill it, it's really, i- it's. The question that usually comes up that becomes problematic is what's the setback from the, from the boundary of the Vernal Pool?
I remember when that was, I just like, I mean, they did that, it really messed up a lot of land. Stopped people from doing.
The only other thing with that may, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen or not, but we want, we need, we'd like to have some total water source or totally fill some trucks coming in. Whether we do it by wells or um. If we could do something to the street, but that. We put that into their hands. Yeah, yeah.
So um.
You got ducks and geese.
Unless you let them make you put a filtration system into it or something, you know. I mean, other option is, is wells, and then we put storage tanks under this. Living part of the slam.
Yeah.
Water and then a pump.
It's live well kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, we don't have pressurized hydrogen, we gotta go get water, so in the middle of the night, you have car fire, you don't use a whole ton of water, it'd be nice to go back and just fill it up. Instead of going down and going dry agit somewhere and. Hooking everything up just to fill in, you know, four or five hundred gallons of water, you know.
So the ordinance does kind of address um, water withdrawals, uh, groundwater withdrawals, that is. Um, and the, the mark off is, I think it's two thousand gallons per day. Um. The uh, if it's more than that, we need to look at what impact it might have on neighboring wells.
Yeah, I don't think we do. We'd fill it ourselves to begin with, so if it's a three or ten thousand gallon, whatever we decide, we'd fill it, and then it would be so much a day.
Yeah.
Not, we, I don't think the well would handle filling a thousand, two thousand gallons that day. So we do like two hundred gallons that day, the next day two. Gradually fill it back up, you know.
Yeah.
That would be the thought process, we just, we'd have to put the storage tank under the non-truck part of it.
I, I'm not.
And we might need a sprinkler system.
Yeah.
So that's another tank, because they can't use both. Same tank, but I think they'd be separated.
I only bring it up because of, you know, I mean, I don't know much about the operation of facilities as you're proposing, but um. You know, if there was a concentrated amount of pumping that had to go on. Not unlike a public drinking or supply well, you know, the, the maintain adequate. Not unlike a public drinking water supply well, you know, the, the maintain adequate. So you had adequate water storage, you know, it just points you to know about that.
Yeah, now we thought about that, but, but filling it just a little bit every day.
Yeah.
Some sort of tiny system, so you do so much a day.
I mean, you'll see any applications, questions directed right at that issue, um.
I mean, ideally, if we didn't have the mill foil, going to the stream would be the idea. Whether you can put a filter in there to filter that out before it gets to the tanks, I don't know, if they allow it, you know.
Yeah. The, um, uh, I, I'm not positive this, certainly further up in grade. That escar is part of the significant sand and gravel aquifer that runs all parallel Route twenty seven and. And then, uh, of course, well, right here, um, the, um. So that brings into play, uh, a series of questions about. What if any petroleum and hazardous materials will be stored on site? And, um, the, um. The primary concern would be bulk storage, you know, which.
We don't have, we don't have, I mean, the only thing would be the foam, and now that's even gone to a. Friendly or foam, just, and that, that's all five gallon. And then we, we, we don't have to store five hundred gallons of, you know.
So if it's got a material, basically, if it's got a material safety data sheet.
Yeah.
It's considered a hazardous material, and, and you'll be needing to provide a list of those, the. approximate quantities to be stored, how it will be.
Just trying to think what else we store.
Above ground or below ground storage make a difference?
Yeah, it does, um. I mean, our ordinance. Kind of ties in with D E P, uh, best management practices for storage and those kind of materials, I, I, I'm, um. The, um. Um, again, I, I mostly bring it up because you will be needing to provide an inventory and, and. If this is just a, I don't know how, um, but question on my part too, I, I don't. I assume you're gonna have a decon facet, uh, room or something like that.
Yes, and then.
And that'll go, but that'll go to the septic system, right?
Right, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Machine and dryer.
Yeah, I don't think that should be an issue, given, I mean, if this was Auburn or Lewiston, maybe.
Right.
But.
Probably based on calls and.
Yeah, um, I mean, again, part of it comes down to. And, you know, you definitely want to have Sheridan or, or whoever double check, is this on a main geological survey? Significant sand and gravel aquifer map?
It definitely is, so we know that well.
Yeah, I, I was guessing that, but I wasn't positive.
Yeah, and that's the top of the hill or something, right? Because it's the whole, the whole lot, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is the, the land. That we, we, I mean, we almost can only just go back to the wood line, maybe a little bit into the wood line for the setback in the stream, right?
Yeah, I, I think, I, based on what we have, we haven't decided what our heating system is gonna be. So if we had fuel oil, that'd be the one larger tank, but other than that, all we have is, you know, internal storage of.
Most likely.
There is an exemption for a certain amount of fuel, fuel oil. I can't remember off the top of my head what it is.
And if the foam was an issue, we also have the other two stations to store, and we just fill it. The trucks hold like thirty gallons.
Yeah, it. There isn't a now and now prohibition, it's, I mean, let's say it's something more, um, problematic than. Than firefighting foam, let's say it was, uh, some kind of a solvent, you know, a degreaser or something of that nature. I mean, then we'd be looking for, you know, um. Secondary containment, storage on secondary containment pallets or something of that nature. Uh, you know, something that goes close, works towards, you know, best management practices for storage of those kind of materials. So that you have in the event of a drum leak or something, or somebody pierces it with a. You know, with a piece of equipment or something, I mean, as you know, probably as well as I do, bad things happen.
Yeah, we have those issues. Is there any other thing that would sticks out that you'd be thinking that we need to? Be looking at, I mean, like I say, we're, Sheridan will be with us, I mean, the whole permitting process, applications. Or sightline, maybe probably, but, uh. We just wanted to give you, you know, I know there's been some questions, what's going on, and we just wanted to kind of.
I personally appreciate it, uh, and, and it hopefully is a benefit to you too, because, you know, you don't want to be. Investing a lot of money, time and energy on a property that's not developing.
Exactly, you know, I mean, we still have the D O T, that's not a.
Yeah.
Nothing is, but we don't have a permit yet of anything, so.
It's tough, we're, I mean, as you all know, we're, we're so fortunate in Belgrade to have the lakes and the natural resources that come with it, and then it does, you know. Limits us to where we can build and what we can do, and, you know, I think we've got a pretty strong alternatives analysis. People looked at a lot of properties. But we're hand up, so I think we stand a really good chance of getting our, our permit to be, you know, the government good solutions with a lot of stuff, it's a promise, but. We're hoping to get that a little further here in the next couple of weeks, hopefully.
The, the only other, uh, standard that I can think of that's sometimes problematic for the proposals come before us. And, and a lot of times causes confusion as well, is there's a, a requirement, and it varies depending on where in town a project is proposed. Uh, if it's in a so-called village district or some outside of village district, like this part of town is considered a village district. But I think it ends at the railroad tracks. Um, the, uh, uh, is the amount of, um, th- there's a requirement for, uh. A vegetative buffer along the, not a buffer, a screen, vegetative screening, some plantings or, or maintaining natural trees. That may or may not be a problem for you, you know, for visibility and things like that. We do have. With good cause, we have, um, the ability to waive that. So I, I would focus on that a little bit.
Being good neighbors, we want to keep a buffer. To the south, there's a house right there, um, there's already a tree line, and then, um, if you go by and you look at it now. To, uh, the other piece probably want to buffer that.
Yeah.
There'll probably be some trees and plantings there, and then maybe something else on there. We gotta keep that line of sight too, that's the.
Yeah, well, that's, and that's, because there's a requirement for with. The, uh, abutting, abutters, but also along public roads, and that's the one I'm concerned about. Maybe being problematic, given the kind of facility this is gonna be.
Maybe we wanted to look good too, so that's gonna be, we don't want, we want to be good neighbors and maybe.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, part of it is. Uh, attractiveness really is what it comes down to, uh, but, um, but there are different ways to skin that cat. And, uh, so I just raised it as something to focus and, and know how to make and discuss with Sheridan.
That's why we're here. Well, maybe we come back with a permit, it's a little easy.
Oh, I, there, there was one other thing that I, I, um, Pete kind of touched on it, and that was sort of the process that we use. So that, you know, what to expect, um, typically, we, uh, we're, it takes, under the ordinance, it takes two meetings. To, uh, approve a project. The first one is focused exclusively at determining whether. Uh, we've been provided with a complete app, application, and there's a checklist that's in the application, uh, on, um. That application itself that we actually go through, uh, item by item, so, you know, you can use that as your own guidance. Uh, we vote that night on whether the application is, uh, uh, complete. And sometimes if there's something minor missing, we worry about it at the next meeting, but. As long as the big chunks are there, um, then it's. Between that meeting and the following meeting is when, uh, Hans will send letters to, uh, all the landowners within five hundred feet. Of any of the boundaries, um, and so that may, um. Uh, and then the next meeting, the following meeting, or whenever the next meeting will be, depending on, um. Circumstances, uh, um, the, uh, is when we would, um, one, if any of the. Public wants to submit comments or, or, um, make comments, uh, that's when we would entertain those. It's also when we would go through the application, ask our questions, uh, and, um. And, uh, debate it and, and, and vote. So it usually takes two, sometime, we've had some that have gone as many as six, but that's because the application. Wasn't complete for multiple meetings, and, uh, and there was a lot of that. I'm not.
Yeah, that's why we're paying that, we just, that's why we just wanted to step in first and say. Oh, this is what we're looking at. See if there's any red flags or. I have a few, so.
Yeah, and the committee, we haven't reviewed this together or talked about it, so really, I. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised if this is gonna continue to evolve. It's very, very, very early on.
I know some of Bill's property in the back there is in the shoreline zone. I assume some of your property would be as well. But that, that's not part of really the proposal, is it?
No, we're out of the shoreline zone. It kind of comes like this, and then here.
Okay.
We've got some space, yeah.
Okay.
Like you say, if you go back, if you look at the tree line, it's just inside the tree line. The setback, so.
And then this blue, this blue is from the, uh, D P's G I S viewer, so that's. You know, review area for critical threat and danger, and speaking of concern, so in our area. In this part of town, let's say Scarlet Blue, which is like a damsel fly, and then, uh, Black Turn.
Oh, right.
So, I, again, I suspect that's gonna be an issue for us, but that's what. W R C did for us to pull all that together, sightlines has a little factor that into everything.
I only raise it because I remember when Bill came in, um, asking about building a garage and. Part of his property because of slope is actually in a, in a resource protection zone. And I wouldn't be surprised if the back end of this parcel might also be, I, I don't know for sure, because I don't have a map in front of me, but.
Yeah, yeah, it's in there, pretty much follows, like you said, that, that slope. And we learned shoreline zoning pretty well after a couple of months.
Well, that's what's funny about it, we had in the first year, wow, no problem, you know, they were all for it, and then it removed it for, and then all of a sudden, it was like. D P said, no, it's in shoreline zone. They tried to make it fair, but that was just getting me to, no room to do anything.
Yeah.
That's why we abandoned that one.
Well, if you're investing this kind of money and you want this to be a long-term solution, you don't want to have those kind of constraints.
Third or fourth piece of property. So by is.
So any other board members?
From D E P about the Vernal Pool?
I don't know, no, we believe sightline, that, yeah, we gained it all, but we, the only reason we got involved at the beginning was. Tom does this type of work, and he's like, we should do this testing in the spring, so the Vernal Pool was gonna hold you off for another year and. So that's why the town, we took it out of our capital reserve to do that. I think we're gonna have a meeting coming up soon, sitting down with sightlines and Sheridan, that's when we pass this out. Bring your recommendations and.
Yeah, Hans, is there anything that you can think of that we haven't?
Will we waive all the application fees since the town project? Save us all half a penny.
I mean, if a question comes up, um, either feel free to go to the Hans and have Hans bring it to us, or if you want to come back. More welcome to do so, um. Do, do you have a, uh, assuming the, uh, the two major issues, the Vernal Pool and the, and D O T permit can be. Satisfactoryly resolved, do you have a hoped-for timeline?
Uh, spring, because the grant has to be, they're telling us that if we get approved, the money will be February, March.
Okay.
And we can't really do a great grant until that.
Right, so, right.
It would be spring.
Well, like I said, you know, you have to plan it on our end for at least two meetings. And hopefully that's all of them.
And that gives us more time now, because we wanted to go in this year. But two things happened, and it was just like, I wouldn't be just, then the, the grant, and we're like, oh, that, you know, that'd be great, but then they said, well, you don't get it till February, March or April. They don't know exactly when, if you get it, and so it'd be spring.
Yeah, we don't have a schedule from them yet, it's kind of out of the window, but we were thinking probably fall. Applications would be submitted ideally, if we can stick these on track, but, yeah, this fall, this fall, yeah.
So we can have everything ready to go, get a grant.
What kind of grant state?
It's a federal, federal grant.
Congressional direct spending.
Living here, matter of fact. Yeah, one of, uh, she's, um, people from their office, she's already came up toward two of the stations, and she ran out of time. She's coming back next week to look at the lake station. Um, but she's been very positive and, not about email, just to say we moved another step closer, so. And now we're saying, what, like four point five million?
Dan, can I have a head, help you out?
Uh, well, we're going on the federal level, he's on the stage. Yeah, he was there when we met with her.
Oh.
Couple times. We've got a Zoom meeting with her at the beginning, a couple of them. And then she came in person, once, and coming back again next, next week.
Anything else? Nothing for me, folks, yeah.
Good luck. Thank you, thank you.
See you again, hopefully soon.
Yeah, right.
Anybody can put those fires on, it should be.
Good luck with the rest of that process.
Yeah.
Uh, so the next item of business, uh, is the, uh, shoreline zone ordinance update. And, um. Updates, and, um, we received an email, and Sarah also called me about this. Um, she has asked that we delay this until, uh, our next meeting. Uh, she was quite concerned that, uh, we. Provide an ample opportunity for Pete, who wasn't at the last meeting, uh, Rich Baker, who's not, wasn't at the last meeting nor this meeting. Uh, to be able to have input as well as you, Nick, since you missed the last meeting. Uh, so, um. Unless somebody really objects, we'll, um, we'll table that. Uh, you should have, uh, in the materials that, in board packets, the, uh, act, and I also emailed them. When I, um, both, the, the language for both of these possible, uh. Amendments that are up for discussion, uh. I think they did that. Friday, last Friday or Saturday morning, I, I can't remember which, um, but, um. Hans also has them in our packet. See. Land wise, in terms of, um, Sarah didn't talk to me about this, but, um. With her not president, there's no point us having an election. Made it this far, you know, we're beyond the halfway mark without. Our elections, so I think if we put it off for another couple, four weeks, so it won't be the end of the world. You know, if everybody's in agreement, you can table that.
Yeah, we got a pretty strong bench. We do, we do all right, and she takes off.
Yeah. As well. Uh, and then the next, uh, item is, uh, approval of minutes, um.
Three six, we got three people here now. Thank you, Hans.
Motion to accept that, six, six, nine, four, eight minutes.
I, I don't think I do. I wasn't present at.
Great, it's Craig.
Peter and me.
Peter and Penny.
Yes, you want to set the uh minutes? Hold you off.
Six, six.
What, what did you say?
I made a motion to accept the minutes.
I second it.
It's, we have a. Motion for Penny to accept and seconded by Peter, all in favor. Peter?
Yes.
Thanks. Great. So three to zero. Unanimous votes. Uh, let's uh look over the uh July eleventh. Which are in our packet, that, Greg, myself. And Penny.
How's that a thousand?
Lucky guy.
I don't have a copy of those. Is Sadie Hammond spelled right? I think it's S A D I E. Her name is really. Mercedes. What they call it, Sadie, and I think it's S A D I E.
Yeah, I, I personally don't know if that's spelled right or not.
Shoreland, boy, that should be shoreline zoning.
Have a chance to look at it. Have you had a chance to hear it? Yeah, if you have any. And uh so for. Then if you had your question whether Sadie was, was spelled correctly, I, you know, since we don't know.
Right.
Maybe somebody could look it up and uh. And then your other suggestion was on the uh under old business.
Yes, should be capitalized, something should be added, ocean capitalized.
Right, so first line under twenty-five foot, the foundation setback. Shoreline zoning shouldn't be uh. It should be reached or uh shoreline zoning ordinance with caps of S Z and O.
I don't know what this is. What Estha collects? What's Estha?
I don't know either, um. If that was supposed to be um.
You know what it is?
Uh, I think she probably will say water. Cause the S is next to the A, the E is.
Next to that is the next. So Esther maybe just should be water. Yeah. So the other. Uh, change is uh on page two, what went setbacks. Second line, I'm starting, maybe there are a lot of low areas where rather than Esther, E S T E R. Uh, that should be changed to water. So it reads where water collects. Then on the same page, um. Under uh approval of the previous minutes, um. Decision, uh my last name is spelled incorrectly, it's S E L. Uh likewise in the last paragraph. And I guess, um. Think we need some consistency in formatting to uh. In terms of uh. Numeration, we started off with new business being number one, but. Uh, number one under new business, but uh under old business, there's no numbering system, so if that could be corrected. Um, I guess I would entertain a motion for. Get you Penny or Greg.
Many more.
Is a butt.
What?
Is a butt spelled A B U T T? Or is it A B U T? First line on the second page, end of line.
Split this way, that's how I would spell it.
A B U T.
Yeah, right or wrong.
Yeah, I think it's one T, A B U T.
Is it? Thank you. Looked it up, okay.
So Craig, you're in the process of making a motion.
Make a motion, like, minutes of um. July eleventh as amended.
Second. Uh, all with favor, Penny?
Yes.
Francis? And I, uh George will also go against freezing, that's three to zero. Um. The uh. Next item, I guess, is you, Hans.
Yeah, you all got a photo of. Ice cream stand that's emerging on West Road. And um. Then this is just for discussion in the past. There's this, another. Business on West Road that started as somebody's little. Backyard side business and emerged into a large. Her business never went through the commercial. Development review. Um. Our commercial development review ordinance. Has a threshold of twelve hundred square foot. Building addition. For the use of the built uh commercial, for the commercial use. This doesn't meet those criterias. So the only thing. Here that they have not done is gotten a building permit to put their little ice uh ice cream. Stand is up with the slow structures here. You know, actually the other accessory structure on the property is not permitted either, but.
Is that at the corner of the West Road and the Narrows?
It's on the West Road, eleven seventy eight. I'm not sure what it's on the corner of.
You're on Lake Shore Drive towards Gulf Coast, it's similar to.
Yeah.
Also beyond the Narrows really. The Narrows really, um.
Oh, oh, no, it's, it's uh closer to the village.
Okay. Okay, so it's not that business then?
Yeah. I haven't heard.
Has that business been?
I don't know what the Narrows show there's.
It can, some people. Yeah, that's, some people refer to the.
Yeah.
So the way our. Commercial ordinance written, this uh. This doesn't need thunder for the, the board at all, but in light of past. Uh. Complaints or, you know, how, allowing businesses to slowly grow and become. Larger entities without going through the process has been a complaint. So I just wanted to bring this up and mention that. Uh, maybe this ordinance should be looked at for. Changing the threshold or a condition of. Um, you know, there's, obviously they want to serve as many ice cream cones as possible. They don't have parking. On street or off street, there's only one form of degress. Which is very limited. So. Uh, while I'm all into somebody. Being, you know, inspired and acting on their inspirations, there's also. Right now a big. Safety concern in that very neighborhood about. The new parking lot, the traffic that's going to be coming in and out of the parking lot. So if the parking lot's going to catch heat. How can we say nothing about? Somebody starting a business which is going to draw traffic.
So they don't have any parking up in the yard there?
That's very limited.
They already have an ice cream place and they're going to pay us.
Well, we got a Bible if we want, I don't care. It's about the whole starting a business entity. In a neighborhood.
So Hans. I know that it's come up before, but refresh my memory, what prevents? A busy, uh, a business like this from. Basically directing people to park along the West Road where there's not even a breakdown in lane.
Nothing's preventing. It's a public realm.
So it. Uh. A commercial enterprise is a lot absent, you know, the fact. Uh, the business that doesn't fall under the commercial development review ordinance. Any other business can use uh. Public road for parking.
Not supposed to. I mean, the public road is supposed to be for traffic.
Right, yeah, but I guess what the question I'm asking is, is there something, say, say. You know, there's a half a dozen cars parked along here and you get a complaint because this is the same area where. A lot of the people that live in it have um, uh commits a select board to reduce the speed limit because of concerns about speeding. And um. And so it's. You know, the unforeseeable that. They'll be before the select board again if something like that happens. And I could understand why, um. Uh, if, you know, people were parking along the road. I mean, there's no, not, like I said, this. Let me just picture verify that there's no breakdown lane or anything like that that you.
No, you see the side of somebody walking right there. There's two of these walking.
I tell you a lot, I just drove by. The Village Green. On my way here, uh all the way up to the dairy bar. All the way up to West Road. Was just mauled with the uh. Tile stuff, so. To. Sit there and have on four or five vehicles. At a little ice cream shop. How would that stand?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, understand the first part. You said, what was it, what's on the West Road right now?
Both sides of twenty-seven. Pack all the way to the dairy bar. The side of West Road packed all the way up for the Village Green Concert Series. There's more people. Going to that on a weekly basis. Than a year. A whole season of four or five vehicles stopping and ten vehicles stopping and. At this little ice cream shop. So if we're going to make a big deal about this little ice cream shop. Then we got to put a kibosh on to the. Uh, Village Green. Concert Series.
Yeah.
So now we're gonna.
It points well taken.
Uh, we're gonna uh go there.
And Craig.
We going down that gravel?
On the West Road where it comes to. The four corners of the Narrows, what I call, um.
Castle.
Castle Island, yeah. Okay, right in that corner, they have that hot dog stand.
Which has been there forever.
Yeah, and, and they have cars parked along the West Road too.
Uh, yeah. But they blocked off the Castle Island Road, you know. Yeah, and there is a pull off area on the West Road, there's a few here and there, so.
Oh, there is now. Um, the pull off.
Wow, it's wide the. The side packed it.
Yeah, no, that's where our part two in their block.
And it's, um, it's wide enough to get mostly off the road.
Yeah, that's cool. Some like, sometimes along the West Road, you see people park with their boat trailer or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause they can't, just the way they're going to get in and out of that parking lot.
And again, to me, that's not an issue, um. If someone pulled over. It's not an issue. I mean, until it's. Into a bigger.
And there was a debate now, this was a number of years ago about whether or not to go with a parking ordinance of some sort. It was decided not to. So, but anyway, so Hans, this doesn't. Trigger the twelve hundred square feet.
No. But I just wanted to have a discussion because now this is how a landscaping business starts. I mean, any business starts small like this. And grows and become.
Well, I, I mean, obviously if they add it to the structure or, um. And triggered and then went above twelve hundred, then obviously they, they have to get an approval under the ordinance. But your point is that may happen over five years and nobody's the wiser and it falls through the cracks.
It just happens, yeah. There's no parking at all there, or, you know, they've become all of a sudden in violation of parking and all this other stuff. And they say, well, we've been here. For five years and nobody's said anything.
Yes.
So I just wanted to bring it to your attention. You know, look at the ordinance and see. You know. What's the best thing to do now to avoid future conflict?
You know, it's funny, I, I uh saw, uh drove by there, but if not for a, for some time, um. And saw the sign, but I didn't see anything else. And so I, I didn't know what to make of that and, but I haven't seen this, the building or anything.
I'll check it out, I haven't seen it.
Homemade ice cream?
Yeah.
Thank you, Hans. Anything else? No.
Would you say?
Cause I might go there tonight.
I think the concert series is still going on, so I can come in.
Wouldn't be no parker.
Yeah. That's. You know, you. This information Craig brings about the roads being jammed up. People can't get through, hardly navigate through, but the same people complaining about the parking lot, they open.
Same people.
Same.
When that parking lot opens up, that's not too far away from that ice cream shop, right?
Correct.
So they could park in that lot.
Don't get me wrong, cause I'm for the concert series and uh. That's a village area. And you look at all prosperous village areas, Booth Bay. Uh, Bar Harbor.
They have a lot of activity.
Belfast, they have a lot of activities, we're tired, people have to slow down to go through and they have to navigate. It's not the end of the world. And um. So. Don't. But don't uh take what I'm saying as a negative because I like, I like seeing a village doing well, prosperous and I like seeing growth. In the village or.
All the active and stuff.
All that stuff, I think it just makes. Don't do it that much better.
Yeah. Summer tour.
So don't get what I just said, the village bringing.
Understood.
As a negative.
Um. Hans, um, on the uh. Application that we approved for the parking. Lot for uh friends of Bill, Red Lake Village, um. The uh. I mean, the, the timeframe model, that was. Sometime last winter and the timeframe uh for filing an appeal came and went. And then uh it. Uh. The people that lived in that neighborhood or at least some of them. Were upset, uh and went to the select board, has any. Has anything come of that that you've heard of or know about, uh, or, I mean, obviously nobody's been in touch with us.
I've heard it's the same. Just. Argument, certain people don't like it and others do, and it really raises the question in my mind, coming back to this board. Is when we have a notice to a butter, so. Five show up and they're for it and five show up and they're against it. Or even five show up and they're against it and three are for it. How do we? Base our decision? Your decision, not ours.
Yeah, no, exactly.
If it means the letter of the ordinance, whether the people like it or not, if it meets the criteria, it's acceptable.
Right, correct.
And uh I think that's what the public is having a hard time digesting. This, they may not like it.
Yeah, but well.
I bet the. That the rules.
I think over time, once it's developed, we'll put it in there, it's not gonna be an issue.
No.
Uh, cause I was at that select. Uh, and I know these people as well, uh I don't see where it's gonna be, what's the difference if they drive over twenty-seven and drive up to Castle and West Road, uh it's no difference whether it's sexually safer.
I was gonna say, I think there isn't, so I think it it's it's better that way. To have both things, otherwise, they get to come around and do a huge, you know, I mean.
I know it's more traffic, storage unit, but there's always been an entrance there, uh there's more traffic than a storage unit, but what's what's happening now is you know, it's gonna alleviate a lot of what's going on right now, and they haven't had a problem with that, so.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
So it's a catch. So.
That's, it's the not my backyard thing, because there's people, uh, you know, tiny homes are involved. Somebody brings one in and starts clearing a lot, homesteading with a tiny home. The neighbors can't stand it. They, I've got to find a way to get them out of there, no, no, it's their land. They wanna live homesteadly on their land, let them.
That's awesome, appreciate it.
Can I say something about the young, small business? That, I think that it's great that people want to start a small business. And I think that there has to be a balance. And I think that um if 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 too many hopes are made for people to jump through to start a business, it's gonna discourage people from starting a business. And I think small business is a backbone of America. You know?
I agree.
You know, and I'm just saying, you know, and and I do understand complaints that people might have, you know, but I also think it's great to encourage small business.
Hmm, well, especially in the village, yeah.
Yeah. If they don't spend it here, they're gonna go somewhere else and spend their money. You know, and it's good for the town.
It's good for, yeah, tourism.
Yeah.
We have something to offer.
Right, and it's good for the individual too, who wants to make a living, and in this economy, we should try to help people in that, you know?
Thank you. Um the last item uh on our agenda is a discussion of drought hit renewal application. And if I recall correctly from the last meeting, this is something that Rich wanted to discuss, you know, based on what others said, um so should we table that as well?
I'd like to, yes.
Okay. Table that. And uh with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
What's this list of upcoming tasks?
Oh, list of upcoming tasks, um that was based on a discussion at the last meeting. And probably we should table that as until Sarah can be back, uh of things that um need well, it uh sort of the brainstorm, what kind of administrative tasks as well as other tasks we have before, including maybe some additional ordinance amendments. Uh, and so that we can kind of prioritize what we're gonna work on in the coming, say, year or whatever contract we decide upon. Uh, some of those tasks include uh things that I've been advocating for, which is uh to do some of the you know, boring but necessary work to revise it, uh come up with a application uh for subdivisions that since we had adopted a new ordinance two years ago, we don't the current application and the ordinance don't mesh.
Hmm.
Um, the uh likewise for the commercial development review ordinance in the solar uh facility requirements, there's nothing in the application for those. So it if we've got an application for a solar facility, for example, and we didn't have you know we'd kind of be making it up on the fly as we went, rather than actually adding something in place in advance for them to complete in terms of the information that we would need, that kind of stuff.
Good. Yep.
So, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I'm gonna get some of my ice cream.
Seven thirty-five?